Yeah, it's nice though.
It is, it's not really. It's not bad.
Yep, it's a little rainy today.
How do you know that's where you're supposed to be sitting?
I don't know.
Each week we're gonna come and set it a different seat.
Who's the deaf councilperson?
The deaf councilperson?
I'll take somebody from the right.
This is the regular meeting on the council of the city of Southfield, conducted as a committee as a whole for Monday, December 5, 2011. Madam clerk, please.
Thank you. Mr. Seiber.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Liam.
Here.
Um, Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Will not be present. Mr. Franchi.
Here.
Mr. Fracassi.
Here.
Um, Ms. Seymour. Present, you're six members present.
Thank you. First on the agenda of this evening is a request for communication on Miss Pamela Gerald. And you know there's a thing that I just repeated that we need to name and address to the record and have to wait until five minutes.
Oh, I was waiting for it to be quiet or the table talk would stop.
You start talking.
Pardon me?
You start talking, I'll find out.
Oh, they could stop so I can start. Okay. Pamela Gerald, P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-352-9188. I was going to discuss something different, but I think I wanna stay on the point that I've been on. And I wanted to first of all congratulate our city planner for his 5% raise wherever Mr. Crowes is and to say that I think it's, um, something when you can get a 5% raise in a city with poor finances and in a poor economy when there's supposed to be a pay freeze. I would like to invite any council member to answer this question, and it was brought up at the last televised meeting, and that is, does the charter require or would a law enforcement organization in any municipality be required to have a police commission or an internal affairs? That would be the first question. The second question would be through the chair to Mr. Jim Sharet since you seem to have fallen on deaf ears when I'm talking to you. You mentioned that you were going to be looking into all of the allegations and that you would say something at the right time. So, I wanna know, are you going to let the public know when a selection for the police chief will be made because it's been purported and alleged that the decision has already been made? And are you going to share with the public what criteria you use to make that very, very important choice? Also too, I had a meeting with one of the acting chiefs, Mr. Brian Gerald, and I had insisted that another chief be present just for integrity purposes. And one of the things that I talked to him about was an incident that happened here at City Hall in January, on January the 10th. And there was an effort by people in this city to try and put me in a very difficult situation, which I think is embarrassing. It was an attempt to humiliate me, but it did not work. And I asked the question before for someone to define intimidation. I asked the question before that if there's an allegation that someone made a statement, someone made a statement that wasn't true, and another person said that it wasn't true, what responsibility does the police department have to look into the report in its entirety or just some of it? So, I'll give you an example. If someone said that I made a statement and that statement was not made by me, and that person that made the statement said that it wasn't true, is there an obligation in the police department to interview me, that person, and the law enforcement officer that's trying to find out whether or not that statement is true? If there's a statement made in a report that says that I intimidated someone, what's the obligation for you to thoroughly look into this particular serious matter of intimidation? What obligation do you have to me to properly investigate it? And the fact that this January 10th incident happened the way it did, things were stated about me that were absolutely not true, and I attempted to try to resolve this issue because my name was attached to it, I'm really disappointed the way this whole thing was handled. And if this is how you're going to handle selecting the police chief, we're in big trouble. Now, I have since found out that this report is closed, but what I can't seem to get anyone to understand, and Ms. Seymour, you were involved in it, you actually made the report. What I can't seem to get anyone to understand is that whether it's closed or not, whether you thought enough of the story, whatever, to pursue the issue, my name is attached to something that is absolutely not true. And what I can't figure out is, you grabbed me and you pushed me and you attempted to push me out of a room. And this happened January the 10th. Now, if the situation was reversed and I did that to you, I would be in jail. You were not in jail. No one really asked you about that. What they basically said, or what I was told, was that you were trying to guide me to the door. Now, at my age, do I need to be guided to the door? Absolutely not. Do I need to be shown what a door looks like? Absolutely not. But if you felt at that time that there was an incident that you couldn't control, you should've called the police. They already have my name on alert, which I think is sad and it's an abuse of power. But you didn't do that. You didn't call the police. You attempted to police the situation, and that's not right. So, we need to get down to the real nitty gritty. We need to determine who we're gonna pick for a chief and do some serious checking. Thank you very much.
Uh, next is Mr. Davis Carver. All right, then, uh, we'll skip over that and, uh, Mr. Gregory Taylor. Is he still here? No? No? All right, and, uh, the next item, Ms. Banks, uh, liquor license.
Um, the next request before you can hit is a request from H.W.G. Investments, um, doing business at Hurricane Grill and Wings. They're requesting to transfer the ownership from Top Gun Fuel LLC, which is a Class D liquor license located at 29852 Northwestern Highway in the city of Southfield. All the necessary paperwork and documents have been received by the appropriate department and have been signed off. All the taxes and water bills are paid in current due date. The petitioner and the attorney, John Carlin, are both present to answer any questions that California may have with reference to the liquor license.
Good evening. I'm John Carlin, the attorney for the applicant, uh, Hyatt Asmeyer is right here.
Could you pull the microphone over so we can hear you, whoever's speaking?
Hyatt Asmeyer?
Basically, this is a transfer of a liquor license into a former restaurant, which was, as you hear, a Wings and Grill place. And, uh, the landlord, or the tenant, the former owner, ran into some problems and left. And, uh, the landlord brought in Mrs. Asmeyer to continue the same kind of an operation that's there. It's a food service establishment. It's not that large. Uh, there's no entertainment, nothing of that nature, and no alcohol.
I didn't hear the last part.
And alcoholic.
Okay. Um, if you pull the mic, since you're gonna be doing most of the speaking, I think, I can't.
Yeah.
That would be good.
Anything else you'd like to add? No, I don't think so unless anybody has any questions.
The council? Mr. Fracassi?
Yeah, uh, whoever, John, or your client, I, I, this license went to Hurricane in one of our few licenses that we have in the city. And, uh, and so I was really concerned about that license being granted, uh, because we have, it was kind of set aside for something over across the street that would bring some economic development to the area. And, uh, but anyways, the council seemed the wisdom to, to grant this license. Uh, my first question is, how long has Hurricane and its previous owner been in operation?
Run. How long has that, uh, former owner there?
It opened, uh, last October.
Mr. Asmeyer is the owner of the building.
It opened last October.
So, it hasn't been four years yet?
It's been thirteen months now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Still in the days of...
Actually, it's been fourteen, now it's...
Okay. The, 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 uh, the license was granted to whom?
You're talking about the former license.
Well, I'm trying to follow the tracking of the license that was given to the previous owner of Hurricane and try and figure out how, where this license is and how it was transferred. Uh, the transfer in this thing said it was a dollar. Does this show that it was a...
Well, this is a, the reason it's a dollar is because they owed Mr. Asmeyer a lot of money from rent that they didn't pay and other issues. And so, rather than putting a dollar value on the license, it was, or whatever, they just made it a dollar, one dollar, and transferred. And forgave them the debt.
So, the license was, was sold to this individual in lieu of payment?
Well, he owed, they owed them a lot of money.
Well, I understand that.
Couldn't pay for it, so we...
No, I understand that, but I'm just trying to track this license because it was a very special license that was granted, as far as I'm concerned.
I believe it's the same licensing.
Well, yeah, but it was, like I said, a fifteen hundred dollar license. And, and most licenses go for sixty to a hundred some thousand dollars. So, I'm just trying to track the value of, of the thirteen months while we give a license. And then, then it is supposedly, we went out of business and there's a value on the license and trying to figure out if the license was purchased with the equipment that was owed or is it rent that was owed? I see the payments of the rental in this case is like four thousand, forty, five hundred dollars a month and it goes to five thousand dollars a month. And, and I'm just wondering about the, the value that was placed on that license in the, in the, in the, in the, uh, transfer. Uh, John, if I, if you don't... I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say license that I'm for sale. I mean, you know, I mean, I think the license should've gone back to the city. If they, they went bankrupt, they went bankrupt, the license should've come back to the city.
I don't believe they went...
Unless somebody had an agreement...
I don't believe they went bankrupt. Mr. Asmeyer indicates that they owed him in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. Rather than getting into a long litigation, the other owner goes into bankruptcy, it's delayed for a long period of time, could be years, and there's no tenant in there, it's vacant space, it's not good for the mall, it's not good for the building, it's not good for the city. They came to an agreement with them and said, "Just give us the license, give us the furnishings that are in there, we'll let you go and we'll take over this business and run it." And that's what we did. If we were to put in there that there's a hundred thousand dollars for the liquor license, then they would have to come up with verification of the liquor commission.
Yeah.
Wherever they have the hundred. Well, they're not gonna pay the hundred. So, we didn't do that. We just put it in for a dollar. Um, and that's the consideration. In addition to the hundred thousand that was owed to them, that they're not going to get.
That's the value of the equipment that was in there, since it's not even, it's just over a year old.
I don't, well, you can take the equipment out of there, it's worth not much. And the liquor licenses today in Oakland County are not going for anywhere near a hundred. In fact, they're not even going at fifty anymore.
Fifty thousand, so fifty thousand.
No, they're forty to forty-five right now. My experience...
That was concerning, John, because that was a...
I understand. It was one of your original licenses.
And, and, uh...
But at least it's staying here.
No, I understand.
It's not being transferred into Troy or some other place. It's still here, it's still being used in the same building you approved.
No, I understand.
Just different owners.
I understand. I'm trying to give my heart way to go. I'm just trying to track that question that was given, that, uh, that was no cost, they give it to you fifteen hundred and forty-five thousand.
Well, they indicated it's a lot more than...
You know how that goes, you know, you sell, you sell an ice cream cooler along with the license for forty-five thousand, you know, because you can't sell much. But anyway, okay, I was, I just seem to doubt it, you know, I always wondered what the, what the relationship was between the new owners and the, and the old owners and, uh...
Not a good one.
And who, there's a management agreement here now, is that...
There was a management agreement with them so that we could continue the operation while it took the liquor license period of transfer.
So, who presently is, is after the liquor license?
Presently, it's still in the name of the former, the one you gave it to him. Subject to this agreement and with the management that Mrs. Hy, uh, Mrs. Asmeyer has. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'm the chair. So, when the, when the, I guess the transition was from one owner of the, of the Hurricane Grill to the other, was it seamless transition? Did it close? Was there any infrastructure needs that, that were needed to be, or was it just a seamless transition, uh, from him to the new?
Well, it was fairly seamless because there was no money that had to happen. Uh, we have not actually closed, no bill of sale has been signed yet. Uh, we can't do that until we get your approval in the liquor commission.
So, you're attempting to run just the same business, just not, not incur any debt to yourself now?
And we kept the same employees. I mean, it was just a seamless transfer. Kept the place in business.
Okay.
From the beginning, I know what is taking place about this hurricane and everything else. I have no problem in terms of the license.
Thank you.
Oh, uh, is there a, is there a request for a new attending? No. All right.
I, just along the lines of Mr. Moss, um, is anything different, going to be different? Uh, um, with the menu or the operation hours, anything?
No, there'll be nothing different. They can't, they can't change the menu because it's a franchise operation.
Okay.
The menu is provided by the parent company, the franchise owner.
Um, well, I've driven by, haven't been in, and I saw business going on, so, um, I'm surprised to get this request, that the former owner didn't make it. Uh, we, as Mr. Fracassi indicated, we put faith in that person.
So, indeed.
Yeah, so, okay.
Um, Ms. Banks, with this, what, what did you say?
You can put this on the next regular meeting board.
Okay, so, I guess we'll go around the, 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 Mr. Sanders, Mr. Fracki.
Yeah.
Fracki.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Sanders, Mr. Williams, and I, so, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the presentation, um, of the city planner on the non-motorized transit and transit system.
Good evening. What's your name?
Mr. Chair. Um, as you may recall, the city received a grant from the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant through the U.S. Department of Energy in 2009 to make various capital improvements for energy efficiency. Ninety percent of the funding was, was allocated towards these capital costs. However, a small portion was dedicated to prepare a non-motorized pathway and public transit plan. And we're here tonight to, in our initial stages, to give you a brief introduction of where we are to date. And we will be bringing this back to the council sometime next year for additional workshops and study and then hopefully an adoption. However, to date, Planning Commission and the Planning Department have held two preliminary workshops to keep city departments and stakeholders, and we've had one public input session. To help facilitate this initial phase, the city has retained Norm Cox, President of Greenway Collaborative, um, who has worked on several of these energy efficiency block grant projects in other communities. Shortly, he will give a brief PowerPoint presentation to the council, and then we would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Also tonight, we have the Assistant City Planner Jeff Spence and Mike Mason, who's an intern with Lawrence Tech University, who's assisting us on this plan. And before I turn it over to Mr. Cox, I wanna read a quote from the Michigan Governor's Council on Physical Fitness, Health, and Sports. "Active living environments are places where all people are able and inspired to use their feet to get them places. They are places where people of all ages, incomes, and abilities can walk and bike both for recreation and transportation purposes." So, what is a transit plan and why is it important for the city of Southfield? For our purposes, the transit plan will include a review of existing and proposed non-motorized pathways and public transportation. Developing a transit plan for the city is important for the following reasons. One, to encourage an active and healthy lifestyle, to reduce fossil fuel energy consumption, to provide a more pedestrian-friendly and accessible environment, to improve safety for pedestrians, to link destinations through non-motorized pathways, to foster economic development, to increase the use of public transit facilities, to increase the quality of life for residents, businesses, and visitors of Southfield, to leverage state and federal funding sources, to offer mobility options for seniors, persons with disability, and low-income families, and finally, to create a sense of community by encourage, encouraging pedestrian interaction. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Cox, who's gonna do a brief PowerPoint presentation, and then myself and Mr. Cox and the rest of the team will be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Mr. Cox, would you give your name and your address for the number of things?
Sure. My name is Norm Cox. I am with the Greenway, uh, temporary located 205 Nichols Arcade in Ann Arbor, Michigan. And I'll pass around some cards for those of you who need to go to the later. Can you all see if I, if you need me close to the microphone or my...
Uh, you're doing, you're fine, is the mic on or is it back?
Um, we can move it back a little bit if that would be helpful for everyone. We're just trying to avoid getting people's voice.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah.
Um, did you give that, thanks, just, um, your...
Yeah, she got one. Before we kinda get into things, there's often the question of, why aren't we really doing this? And Kerry touched on a lot of this. Really, it's a means to reach a consensus of the community, what is the best way to handle non-motorized transportation and transit? How do we go about creating a logical framework to take the ideas forward? How are you going to promote physical fitness? We wanna improve the quality of life for the residents. And really also looking at the safety of the bicyclists and pedestrians. You have heard on city council, I'm sure, the buzzwords, healthy liberal communities, cool cities, smart growth, safe roads to school. These really all have a common ground in improving the bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. Now, we talked about safety. If we look at 2004 through 2010, we had a hundred and twenty-nine pedestrian crashes, ten of which were fatal in the city. Twenty-one of those were incapacitating injuries. Hundred and one bicycle crashes, three of those incapacitating injuries. So, we have some safety issues we need to address, and you can see the, kind of, the maps over here. And one of the key things to making this work is the idea of complete streets. Complete streets, in a nutshell, are planned, designed, operating, maintained, so that they work for all users to safely and comfortably both move along the street and get across the street. And it's not a singular aspect, it's the idea of streets creating a network. And we're talking about users, pedestrians, bicyclists, transits, motorists, trucks, and a whole range, range of people. And one of the things that we, we try to stress is, there's really no such thing as a typical pedestrian or bicyclist. Start thinking of the ages, the range of ages, and educational skills, physical abilities, travel speeds, you know, there's all kinds of different bikes. So, we have to look at this, it's, it's not a simplistic one solution scenario we're talking about. For example, when you think about bicyclists, you could consider there's maybe four different type of bicyclists we're looking at. Uh, one, strong and fearless, these, the lycra crowd, if you will, who could bike anywhere and anytime, they're comfortable going out on the busy roads. There's another group called enthused and confident, about seven percent of your population. They frequently bike, but if they're gonna go on your main road, they want something like a bike lane. Then, you know, fifty percent of your population, maybe sixty percent, they're interested, they're concerned, they like the idea of a walkable, bikeable community, but if you go put a bike lane on the main road, they're not gonna go on it, they're just not that comfortable. They're more comfortable on the local roadways and on trails. And so, how do we serve all these populations? Now, there's a third of your population thinks this is all crazy talk and they'll never bike anywhere, but if you could address, you know, bicycling for two-thirds of your population, you're doing pretty good. For, how do we serve these different groups? Well, there's a bike lane. It's the idea of, you have a designated travel lane for bicyclists, it's delineated by a solid line. And the key aspect is the bicyclists travel the same direction as motorists do. They operate as a vehicle. It's about five feet wide is the minimum. As the speeds get higher, you make the bicycle lane a little bit wider if you have room. Most people feel very comfortable going in these at speeds during the thirty, thirty-five miles an hour and decreasing number as a higher speed. So, we're kinda trying to get that enthused and confident bicyclist. Of course, there's the roadside pathways, these are all around Oakland County, where it's a pathway that parallels the roadway within the road right of way. But there are some issues with these. There are conflicts that intersecting, with motorists that intersecting driveways, mixing bicyclists and pedestrians. It's, actually, crashes between those two are a little bit more common than you think, they don't always get reported. Um, how do you get, throw over here to the store or a restaurant on the other side of the street? There is no good way to get across there. Uh, but, they're very comfortable for people as far as their interaction with motorists. One of the things we always try to point out is, what is it like to bike in a sidewalk or a side roadside pathway versus a bike lane? And the real issue we always find is motorists aren't looking for bicyclists, especially those going opposite the flow of traffic. This person, you can see the right blinker on there, they're trying to look for a gap in traffic, they're looking down the road here. This was a near miss, this wasn't staged. The bicyclist had to do a quick swerve, otherwise they could've broadside this car. This is where we see a lot of bicycle pedestrian crashes. Um, so, the bicyclist now has kind of, by default, technically, they may have the right of way because the stop part's back here, but in reality, they're having to stop for all the cars looking to get out of the intersecting driveways. If they're in a bike lane, they're operating as a motor vehicle, it's right where the motorists is looking. So, it's all about setting up expectations. Now, if you're not comfortable in a bike lane, that's sixty percent, um, we use these things called neighborhood connectors. Um, we use these things called neighborhood connectors. You already have them, bike lanes, or, excuse me, bike routes, where you have some signs kind of telling people how to navigate around the city using some of the local roadways. Well, if you combine those with pathways and start to sign them. Right now, it says "bike route", and the question is, great, where to? Uh, there's some new signs, the size of a street sign, that basically say, "Here's your destination for bicyclists and pedestrians. It's a mile and a half this way and directs you through the turns." It's a little bit of an incentive and say, hey, you know, I never do. I could walk down or bike down to the library. Um, and kind of encourage people to take low-volume ways to get through the neighborhoods. Connect those up with some off-road pathways, and maybe you could find some ways to get someplace more direct, walking and bicycling than driving. And so this is also a great way for people to get comfortable with their bicycles. For pedestrians, the key thing, direct travel. Pedestrians do not go all the way. Uh, you figure that, you know, a quarter or a half mile is your typical trip to the store. If you have a sign directing you to go a half mile down to the traffic signal, does that happen? No, and this, you tell how well that sign is respected. Um, so we need to think about, we're trying to accommodate pedestrians as kind of, yeah, they'll go maybe ten percent all the way to get a nice safe crossing. But you just can't ignore the demand for the crossing and tell them, hey, go down to the signal. You have to see the problem and work with it. And we did a little analysis of the city in these little yellow sausages. We started looking at the land use, the bus stops, and how the distance is between signals. And we said, you know, these are places where we see that there's a likely demand for people trying to get across the roadway. Uh, that people probably aren't going down to the signalized crosswalk right now, and these are areas that maybe we should look at. And how do you deal that? All kinds of typical solutions, but you vary them on what's going on. Uh, there are some signals out that put flashing beacons under standard signs that are only operated when someone's there trying to get across the street. They really get the motorists' attention. Um, crossing islands, where a pedestrian will cross the road in two stages. They look for a gap in traffic in one direction, go across, they stay in the island, and then they look for a gap in traffic the other way and cross. Very simple, no interference with motor traffic. And that island there in the middle is a huge awareness building for the motorists that, hey, I need to keep my eyes open. Something unique is happening here. You've probably seen some of these along the Critten River Trail, up in the Rochester Hills and Auburn Hills area. They're becoming more and more popular. They are always quite well-received by the communities. There are some new things called pedestrian hybrid beacons, for where those don't work, where you start getting motorists' attention with the flashing yellow, bring them to a stop with the yellow, solid red, pedestrians could get across. And then, what's nice is it goes to a flashing beacon, because it's a big road, and some kids zooms or bicycle across there. You're not wait, holding traffic up forever. The motorists could see that, hey, uh, someone has cleared there, it's a flashing red, I could now proceed safely. So it minimizes interruptions in the motor vehicle traffic. So how do you bring all these things together? Well, these blue lines might indicate the idea of these neighborhood connectors. And where the neighborhood connector might hit a busy street, you would have those crossing improvements. And things such as bike lanes on the main road. Now, not all main roads are created equal from a bicyclist or the motorist standpoint. Some of these roads are more important for bicyclists and pedestrians. And so we look at that, that there are some corridors that we really want to maybe focus bicycle pedestrian improvements on, make them very comfortable for pedestrians and bicyclists to both move along and across. Now, some of them are pretty good right now. Other ones are rather challenging. But maybe this is a framework to kind of improve some corridors. You would do, have elements such as bike lanes and sidewalks, crossing islands, planted medians, street trees, four-to-three lane conversions, narrower travel lanes, something where the road feels more comfortable to travel at 35 miles an hour. Uh, I see the officer back there, and you could ask him, what's it easier to get people to slow down? Do you post the speed, or do you design the roadway so it's just driven more naturally at the speed you want them to do? Um, so if you design the roadway where people naturally drive it at what your target speed is, then if there are the differential between pedestrians and bicyclists and motorists is lower, and you could actually make some just beautiful streets that really reflect well on the community. We have done some preliminary mapping of these neighborhood connectors. Excuse me, um, also talking about neighborhood connectors. We've done some preliminary mapping, and you could see kind of like a secondary system that's between the mile roads, that uses local roadways, shown in these blue dots, and some potential new pathways in the green, making it easy for someone to navigate about the city, get to your schools, your parks, your civic center. And I look at this as a way to say to your 12-year-old, hey, get yourself to your soccer lesson or your soccer practice. Um, you know that they could go on low exposure, get across the road safely, and have a way to get around town. Um, so we tried to create a complete network. There's a few fit bugs still to be worked out and checking on some things. And these neighborhood connectors are taking your basic roadway and adding elements, maybe as many roundabouts, curb extensions, wayfinding, street trees, making these very comfortable. Um, you may have, you want an environment that's very friendly. You want it to be very focused on the bicycles and pedestrians. You may even bring in green street technologies, like permeable pavements along the curb lines. And the key, again, is some of these wayfinding signages. And everyone thinks like, oh, gosh, that's a lot you're asking to do for all these neighborhood connectors. But you start out very simply. Just take a typical roadway. Start first phase, some bike sign, bike route signs, bike and pedestrian route signs, maybe some basic painted pedestrian improvements to help people get around. Maybe have time, if cut-through traffic is an issue, starting to add some traffic calming, curb extensions. If you want to turn it into a first class, you could create like a neighborhood greenway. Take some of these where you can get rain gardens and permeable pavements, and make it a very nice street where someone's saying, hey, this is a great way to go explore the city. It's not going to happen overnight, but it's something you could integrate into road resurfacing projects. And the key is to tie these neighborhood connectors into crossing improvements. Right now, it may be very easy to get through your own little neighborhood between your one-mile grid, but what happens when you come out into the mile road? How do you get across the road? So you would have crossing improvements to make sure you get across. Um, because we don't have everything figured out exactly which solution would go where, but more of a palette of road crossing improvements. And then we want to tie this into transit. You could create super stops or super bus stops where these neighborhood connectors come out to the main roads. People have found that if you build shelters, have different amenities, uh, like the route signs and mats, the people go a little bit further to the bus stop if they know they have a dry place to stay and can wait a few more minutes. And you could tie these into the neighborhood connectors. And then we took a little look at things and said, well, of all these ideas of improving the main roads and all these neighborhood connectors, what would be a backbone look like? And what should you maybe focus on? And we've kind of highlighted that green, and it's a fairly coarse grid. You have, you know, some improvements already around Civic Center Drive, some other elements that are kind of out there already. But create a system where people could get through the main destinations in the city and focus your energies on this. Again, the easy way to do this is not starting from scratch, but integrating it into a road resurfacing project. Uh, you could do some very low-cost things at signs, but a target of this for the kind of the near future. Now, I think Terry described that this is kind of a rough vision, kind of setting some directions. We've identified there's certain areas that need a more detailed look at things. The mixing bowl, um, I don't think it'd be described as particularly bicycle pedestrian friendly.
Feel friendly.
And, at least, I'm not the only one who feels that way. Um, some parts of Telegraph where we have, look at a lot of the commercial activity along Eight Mile. How do we kind of get between the Civic Center and Lawrence Tech and getting across Northwestern and down here in the cornerstone area? There's a lot of pieces, if you will, where, you know, you have universities, we have stores, we have the origins and the destinations in close proximity to some of these places. How do we capitalize that and make places where people will say, you know, I can walk there. I want to bike there. Especially with like your students at LTU, if you start to get more in the residential situation. How do you take Lawrence Tech from being an island to integrated, injury community? So what are we going to do next? Well, um, beyond the visioning, we want to kind of go and look at some of these corridors a little bit more specifically. We have some concepts, but more detail what's possible. Uh, looking at some of these trail options, there are wetland issues we need to look at. Field check all these routes. We always go bike and walk these things to make sure they work and get some more feedback from people. Uh, there's a lot of freeway crossings. We've taken a preliminary look at some of these. Some of these can be improved with fairly minor improvements for bicycles and pedestrians. Uh, what's the most appropriate road crossing issues, policies for the city? How do you go about your ADA and your maintenance? And then for the schools, how's school transportation handled? Um, how are we going to take this idea and reach out to the public and say, okay, we're going to build it? How do we encourage you to use it? And how do you find the ways to get from your home to your store? And that kind of outreach. And taking your existing strip development, and how does that transform over time with each redevelopment that comes in front of city council to make it a little bit more bicycle and pedestrian friendly? So I want to do a kind of quick run through, and we'll turn things over for questions. And, um, as much as time as you would like.
I have another question.
Yes.
Oh, okay. That's fine. I just wanted to kind of build off of what you guys were talking about, because this is definitely something that really excites me as a person who's lived in this city and is seeking kind of different ways to travel about it. Um, and I was talking with a friend about this earlier, and she's involved with the Michigan Complete Streets Coalition. And I was telling her, you know, this might, you know, make me even more excited to ride my bike to City Hall. You know, I wouldn't describe myself as strong and fearless, but definitely interesting and concerned. Uh, but she was, she, and she's a, you know, young person who's active and is a bike rider as well. And she was quick to point out that this isn't just a focus on bikes. And it's not just a focus on young people. And she was telling me that if pathways were developed throughout our region when the population decades ago was a lot younger, the baby boomers are aging, and it's our senior population's becoming more active, some of these pathways aren't senior-friendly. Um, I have an uncle, or a great uncle, that used to live at Lancaster and was still off to Myers. And we used to get, he was 89 years old, and we used to get kind of concerned about his mobility because he was fiercely independent, but would want to walk from Lancaster across the busy 12-mile road at Peak Time to Myers. Um, and projects like this take everybody's age and everybody's demographic into consideration. Um, so I'm, I'm just wanted to say I'm excited. I'm excited to see what you guys are going to present moving forward. Um, and, yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
Through the chair. I just wanted to add, not only are we looking at the infrastructure within the city, we're also looking at how to connect the regional connectors, what other communities are doing, linking up with Woodward Light Rail, looking at transit to the airports, looking at other alternatives. So that, that'll be part of our broader study as well.
Great. I'm glad to see this, this, um, I think it was early 70s that we put in the bike paths, and most of the signs are presided and, you know, we don't really even promote biking and stuff from our hundreds last few years. Um, my, if I'm hearing you right, so for instance, um, not too long ago, we were looking at the redesign of Southfield Road. Uh, so as we take projects on like this, um, you would think bicycle or bike path, correct?
That's correct. Through the chair. Also, other pedestrian amenities, like having a safe harbor to cross, those landscape outlets provide that, making sure there's connections to major destination points and so forth. So it's that, part of that complete street legislation where we want to design streets not only for automobiles, but for bicyclists and pedestrians as well. And we're also looking at working with SMART and DDOT on pedestrian improvements at the bus stops.
Uh, in, or, early October, Myron and I were at National, or Michigan University Committee. And the whole theme was place, essential place. And I think that this ties into, into essential place. We got a lot out of that conference. Thank you.
Yeah. First, I would like to know the definition, and I think the legal department can answer this. What is the city? Who are these?
Uh, someone in San Antonio, what is the city?
The people, right? Sure. We represent the people. The council, we're elected to represent the people. I don't remember retaining Greenway Collaborative as a private consulting company. Did we ever hire them? Or is the cost, I need information, and who are they? I have an idea who they are now, but I don't remember approving, hiring a consultant for the planning call.
Well, I guess we can get back, back to you specifically, but this was, um, this contract was less than the $10,000 requirement. The city administrator did sign off on it, and following the proper procedures, the consultant...
Shouldn't you have come to council at least to get an approval for that?
My understanding...
This is a bigger, this is a bigger project than you're saying now.
What, through the chair?
But you've mentioned the bus stop, you've mentioned transportation, you've mentioned a tremendous project.
Through, through the chair, our department is providing the majority of the work in kind for, for this project with, um, with the assistance of some interns. Mr. Cox was hired under the contracted amount, less than $10,000, to help facilitate this, but the majority of the work is being done through the Planning Department at no additional cost to the city.
I'm not talking about the cost. Do we need the approval of the city to do this?
Through, through the chair, the city did approve the Energy Efficiency Block Grant, which outlined this task as part of the, the funding.
I didn't, I didn't see that.
In 2009, and, and we'll be happy...
$10,000?
Yes, and we'll be happy to bring back some backup documents. But this was authorized by the city council back in 2009 to accept the grant. One of the components of the grant funding was to prepare a non-motorized pathway plan. So we're just fulfilling the obligations of the grant.
Okay. In general, it's a bike path.
That's, that's, that's correct.
But you're not building a bike path. You're building, you're building a, a production of a, of a transportation system. Let me go ahead with this. They gave you the cost, but I don't think it's going to stay at $10,000. It's impossible. But, for the chair, Mr. Lance, because I, I have understanding what his concern is, is there will be no capital construction, no work, actual work that will involve...
That's what he, he's relying a lot on. This is just to bring a plan forward and to work through a process, and then the finalized plan will come back to council. So, so even the plan itself has to get the blessing of council. And then, there are costs involved, and that's, when the plan is presented, there'll be some cost figures and some sources of funding. And then that's when those types of decisions are made. And if there are contracts for construction, they have to come back to council.
And if there are contracts for construction, they have to come back to council. And so the protections are there that, that, that we are not, the council is not being tied to some sort of major capital expenditure without the appropriate information upfront. Well, that's a clarification. Thank you. Now, in the plan, you've shown me a roadway with a white strip and you're taking part of the roadway for the bicycle use, right?
Right.
Well, how can you shorten the roadway? Isn't there a minimum footage in a roadway? You're taking away three, four, five feet from that roadway and the automobiles. How can you do that?
Mr. Cox is going to, I can't try to address that.
Is protocol entering or?
Just through the chair.
Okay. Just tell it through.
Through the chair. We, when we work with cities, we typically do an analysis of what is the existing roadway. You look at the number of lanes in the roadway, what is the capacity? What is the width of the roadway? Now, we haven't gone this far with the city here. We've kind of, again, as Chris explained, it's been very high end. But the next step would say, you know, you have excess lane capacity. And we often find, we work with cities, that we could take sixty percent of their primary roads and add bike lanes, look after paint, with no impact to motor vehicle safety or capacity. And how you ask, how do we do this? Well, a lot of these roads are overbuilt. There's been studies saying that a lot of these lanes are twelve feet and over. You could narrow those lanes and still be safe and comfortable. And there's been studies backing this up. Four lane roads oftentimes operate safer, not oftentimes, it's almost a documented fact, operate safer as a three lane road at the same capacity because you avoid the weaving with the four lanes and someone stopping to turn left and all this. So there's some roads that may make more sense for a three lane, just from a motorized standpoint, and the bike lanes a buffer. Some, if it's a road-
Drop your answer. I understand what you're saying.
Okay. So there are opportunities to work it in within the existing roadway as a shortcut.
Well, I think during fantasy land, because when you put a little roadway in that roadway and the motorist is going down at thirty-five, forty, fifty miles an hour, somebody's going to get hit and somebody's going to go out of that area of their area on the road and pit for their bicycle. It happened on twelve mile road. You're in dreamland. I don't think, isn't there a law that you can't shorten the width of a roadway? Roadways were built with a certain width and they can't be shortened?
Through the chair, none of this will be executed that has a danger factor or that's inappropriate. Either safety or according to road design regulations. Their question to get out, but that will matter.
It isn't at all. So it's not going to happen overnight. When a road gets redesigned or redesigned like Southfield Road, then maybe-
It's a long time.
Yeah, it's a long time.
First, I'm asking relevant questions. What could happen?
But I, I'm trying to tell you that this isn't all going to happen at once.
Well, I don't think it's going to happen for years.
No.
Because it's going to, we know it's going to cost more than ten thousand dollars. We know it. Okay. Now, the concept is good, I like. But when you say a bike path, I go for it. So when you say all the extra sitting on the transportation and getting down the cornerstone and getting the elderly people to use their bicycles, that's, that's a little, little bit fantastic. Okay, so what do you expect from us tonight? An approval of what?
Now, this is just an introduction of the study. And we will come back next year with additional workshops. And at some, sometime in the future, we will come back to the council to consider adopting the plan, the concept of the plan. So now it's just merely an introduction so that you're aware of the types of things that we're working on.
And that's paying at ten thousand dollars to you for all these years until we-
It's less than ten thousand dollars.
Less than ten thousand.
And most of the work is being done through the departments within city at no additional cost.
And I hope you're coming back to council.
Yes, yes, that's, as Mr. Sherrett has indicated. And our plan is to bring back further presentations and workshops. But we wanted you to be aware of what the plan and commission in the department has been working on today.
Yeah. Answer Mr. Lance, you know, I'm a older guy, but I saw a bicycle in down the Florida seven seventy-six of Wager Highway. And they have those delineated areas that you bike on, on Wager Highway. And it's down up to October, either towards New Beaches.
We're talking about Michigan. I'm not talking about Florida.
Yeah, but Florida, Michigan, Florida's better than Florida.
It's different. The roadways are different, different sides that we will-
But you were going about seven seventy-six, it would have been, you like the telegraph. Or the Southfield Road. Anyways, there's my, I wanted to know, we did a bike study some time ago. In fact, I had, I don't know if I gave that to you, too, to you.
Yeah, not yet.
Big signs to bike path. And years ago, when they were doing that, they did curb cuts so that when they were bike paths, we would do curb cuts. However, as a new regs, I think we do curb cuts everywhere on the new construction. So everything now is, is doable when you're riding a bike. The plan is necessary. I just wondered how this correlates with the previous plan that we did. I don't know, must have been done under Parks and Recreation or someone, but you should have copies of that. The bike path, to me, not only need to be doing a construction of new roadways, but when they are done, they should have destination points. In other words, like I was looking at that, Inglewood Park is one of the probably most widely used parks in the city for young families. And there's two schools between Lashere Road and Evergreen that cross the street to the park quite often. And looking at the way they cross, there's some light there at Inglewood Park. But how do we work with the county? Do they, do they approve these strips on code? Most of the roadways, major roadways are either county or state in the city. Inkster and Inkster Beach and Evergreen are the only city streets that we have, major streets. The rest are all county or state roads. And we have an area, for example, that Ken's favorite school, Bedford Academy, where they go across Telegraph Road, a horseback or something, I don't know. They, that's a dangerous situation. I think that's one of the things that, that I think they have as a, as a thing to look at is because they go from east, east Telegraph all across to west their Telegraph to get a breath of wind in the median and then head across the street again. But I think those are great things to happen. And if it's done with a, a plan where, you know, we are making sure that people can get to one of our destination points readily and, and make use of them and not just to have them. And we get proper approvals, maybe some considerations as far as funding from our county road commission or state. That Telegraph Road was just completed. Could have had, you know, that kind of a plan in place that would have maybe created those areas. Anyway, it's a good plan. It's, you know, everybody's doing it now and, but they have to be made safe and have to work within the, the construction portions that we work on. If not, if not just those, just to check and see what areas have already been completed, like Inkster Road, Franklin Road, Telegraph Road, those, Ten Mile Road that have been recently been built and see what improvements we can make on those as far as biking and pedestrian walkways.
Yes, through the chair, Mr. Fracassi. The Complete Streets legislation, which was passed by Lansing, requires at least agencies to consider all avenues. And so having the plan in place gives us more weight early on in the process when the county road commission and the, and the state comes in to make improvements in our community that they, they have to more strongly consider those things. And then there's an opportunity to look for additional funding to help implement some of those. So having the plan in place gives us a stronger position to negotiate with. I agree.
That all looks good.
Yes. I wouldn't be on a bicycle on Telegraph Road if you paid me to bicycle on Telegraph Road. Or on Ten Mile Road, on that type of road. This is, this is dreamland.
Well, through the chair, I just, I want to point out one situation. Kamau, the, the large business there on, on South Telegraph, they have properties on both sides of the street. And surprisingly enough, they have dozens, if not hundreds, of their employees that run across the street all day, getting from one building to the next and trying to get to meetings and so forth.
On a bicycle?
Not on bicycles, but that's, that gets back to the pedestrian crossing and providing a safe crossing. Right now, they're just running across traffic because there's no safe harbor in the island and there's no mid-block crossings. So that's another example where this study would help look at situations and possibly warrant some improvement.
Well, that would be fine, that's okay.
I think the other asset-
There are good concepts for this bill. I'm not denying the concept at all.
The other asset to look at is our Rouge Corridor. And we, we have that beautiful greenway that connects twelve mile down to Ten Mile. And that's another opportunity for off-road bicycle and pedestrian improvements. If we can get underneath six ninety-six, that's a natural north-south connector that could link up to the twelve mile bike path.
I used to ride my horse there.
You'd ride your horse there too.
Yeah, I think this is right on time, maybe even late. As Ken said, that when we were at Michigan Municipal League, when I was at the National League Cities, they're pushing the sense of place. The, we're losing our young people because they're going to places where they can get around in different ways than always driving a car. There are things that, places that, for accommodations that they can get to with bicycle or walking or mass transportation. So I think this is, this is an appropriate subject to talk about. One of the, one of the questions I have for you, Mr. Cox, is do you recommend mixing pedestrians and bicycles on sidewalks?
Through the chair, it depends. One of the things, when you start seeing a lot, it depends on how many people are using it. Like I said in the presentation, there's, can be some serious conflicts between bicyclists and pedestrians. So bicyclists could be going eighteen, twenty miles an hour down the sidewalk. And when you add up the mass and the speed, when they hit a pedestrian, pedestrians can end up in the hospital. So what we try to do is discourage fast riding on the sidewalks. Understand that children and adults who don't want to mix the roadway will still be on the sidewalk sometimes and going slower. But really underscore that when you're biking on the sidewalk, it is at a slower space and the pedestrians have the right of way. And for those bicyclists who want to get out and fly, then you have the bike lanes and separate it from the pedestrians. On a pathway itself, it all depends on how much use you're going to have. If it's a really high density area, there are places where you separate the bicyclists from pedestrians. But our experience is if you don't have the volumes, people kind of ignore the recommendations of where they go.
Okay. In some of our neighborhoods, in fact, a lot of our neighborhoods, the streets are fairly narrow. If you park a car on either side, the car that is trying to get through has to be fairly careful because there's not an awful lot of wiggle room to get through. And those, and in those, a lot of those neighborhoods, they don't have sidewalks. So I would imagine that it would be everybody for themselves in those because you couldn't, you couldn't dedicate a bike lane on those kinds of streets because there wouldn't be any room for automobile traffic to get up and down the street. So I imagine that everybody has to kind of watch out for themselves on, on those narrow streets.
Through the chair. Yes, when you have a residential road and the speed limit's twenty-five miles an hour, the difference between the speeds of when biking and driving, they can actually work together without any special facility. The bike lanes are something more when you get into the thirty, thirty-five mile an hour roadways. And the situation described by the two cars making it only one car could pass, I call that traffic calming. It's a way, the speed is going a little bit slower and that actually may make it better for the pedestrians and the bicyclists rather than works. It's thirty some mi, thirty some feet wide open where people start racing down the residential roads.
If I could add, what we found in our workshops in the one public input session that we had, those that do live here and ride their bikes already know where some of those routes exist because they want to get away from the heavy traffic. So they're already finding those, those local roads to get from one mile road to the next. What Mr. Cox is, is indicating that that might be appropriate for just signage so that you can get to the main road without doing anything else. And those other more heavily trafficked local roads, the, the type of progression of traffic calming measures could be added over time.
Okay. Now, I think, I think it's a good, good idea. But I think what we need to do immediately is to start having bicycle education. And, you know, years and years ago, we used to have bicycle rodeos where young kids would bring their bikes in this area and the police would show them how to properly ride the bicycle and how to go, you know, go through cones, traffic cones and all that kind of thing. But there's a, some rules that I think bicyclists need to understand when they start mixing with, with traffic. Also, the automobile drivers need to find out, they need to understand that there are going to be bicycles on the road too. And I know today, it's not unusual to be stopping at a traffic signal and have cars go right by you after the light's red. So they run red lights on a regular basis. Here's, here's a thing that really concerns me with bicyclists here in Southfield right now. At night, there are bicycles with no lights, no reflectors, and wearing dark clothes. And the moon's not out, riding down the, down the street. And that's pretty risky somehow or another. And I don't, I don't think we need any more laws, maybe we do. But I think that, I think we need to educate folks that are going to ride bicycles, how to properly equip their bicycles so that they can be seen with reflectors and, and lights and whatever. Because if more and more people just buy a bicycle and start riding, it's going to, it's going to put more dots on that one map that you have. But I'm, bottom line is, this council really has to change our thought process about where do you want to go from here to the future. When we understand the sense of place, we can't continue to keep doing, making decisions that we've been making for the last twenty years or else our young people are going to be moving away in buses rather than in cars. So we have to make it friendly for people and, and make it attractive to attract young people to come back to Southfield and stay in Southfield if they're already here.
Through the chair.
Yes.
If I could respond to Mr. Fraser. And education is one of those important implementation tools that be part of this plan. And we are aware of a number of communities working with the police- And we are aware of a nu- a number of communities working with the police department on education, types of rodeos and events that I, I participated in as a young adult and a child getting certificates. But, uh, they're actually what they call ticket incentives where police officers who are observing good behavior, people wearing helmets, working with the local businesses actually give out a coupon for free ice cream or a coupon for some nominal thing to reward good behavior. And, and that has been instituted in a lot of communities in a successful way. Um, when I was out in Schaumburg, Illinois, uh, visiting my family when I was a teenager, I was riding apparently not, uh, properly and two teenagers wearing vests came up to me and they were part of the bike patrol and they were there to encourage, you know, just in a friendly way that I was riding on the wrong side of the street. And so there are a lot of education programs, working with the school district, working with, um, police department and others that we can institute.
Yeah, whether this goes any further or not, that still, I think, is a, is something that we need to do is educate the people that are already riding bicycles on how to do it properly. So it reduces the, the opportunity here, the incidents of, of getting in the next. And the last thing I want to say is, years ago, I think the council talked about, uh, when we were putting sidewalks in, there are some neighborhoods that have gaps in the sidewalks that we, when we were gonna do street work and all that, we were going to, um, infill those sidewalks to make a, a complete sidewalk. I don't think it ever happened, but if we're going to encourage more bicycle riding, I think we need to take a look at that. As for planning any street improvements to, uh, uh, fill in the, the gaps so that, uh, people aren't riding down and then darting out in the street and then back up on the, on the sidewalk.
All right, through the chair, uh, again, that's, that's a good point. By having the plan in place, as we get development and redevelopment, sometimes we can share that burden of the cost to the local developer. Instead of putting a five-foot sidewalk in, a concrete sidewalk maybe puts an eight or ten foot, half-foot wide pathway along the mile roads. And if it's part of a bigger master plan, then once you get eighty, ninety percent of the infrastructure and then the city might be able to come in and complete that system.
Through the chair, also, uh, my report that Council Fraser's suggesting, uh, we'll make sure that Public Works is at the table, uh, you know, with later presentation is planned so that there's a negotiation. For example, the sidewalk gaps, uh, and some other things that I know that, um, input for Public Works would be, would be essential.
And I could say, Mr. Sherret, through the chair, that, um, Public Works did participate in, in our workshop as well as other key department heads, so, um, I appreciate the, having, uh, you know, a team, team approach to this.
On, on the final presentation, I think we will have members of Public Works, uh, you know, in, in attendance. But it's a, it's a, a good concept, uh, the fact that, uh, you know, efficiencies are working on it as a comprehensive approach.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Focasie.
Yeah, that was a good question, though. Of course, what about, I was, I was gonna ask, what about the people who have to walk in the street when there are no sidewalks or trees to address them? Um, in the government, that would be very important.
Is that it? I think you told us.
Yeah, I carry another question, um, that I remember approving this grant, uh, request, but, um, it was only for the development of the plan, there was no other money in it for anything else for us.
And I would say unfortunately, it's just for the development of the plan itself and, uh, we have to seek additional funding for implementation. But as, as you had indicated, there are opportunities where the city, the state or the road commission are coming in and redoing streets, repaving, and there might be those opportunities. I know, uh, for, um, Central Park, I mean Civic Center that's going to be repaved next year, um, as part of that process, there's a couple of gaps in the sidewalk system that will be implemented because, because, uh, we brought this to the attention of those who are planning it. And if you look at it, the federal government's paying eighty percent of those infill gaps. Um, where there are bus stops, we're having the key walk, that connection from the main sidewalk to the bus stop being added in. So those are opportunities, we're using other people's money to help complete our system and by having this in place, so that only encourages those partnerships.
You know, I, um, I don't see too many people walking in Southfield. I see them on Twelve Mile, on the wide, uh, blacktop paths we put in, uh, thirty, thirty years ago. And, uh, I always see them on Nine Mile, um, doing the walk around Word of Faith, Nine Mile Evergreen, um, I have a bicycle, I ride on the sidewalk. Um, and I usually don't encounter any pedestrians. Uh, if I do, I stop my bike, but, um, at this point, I wouldn't be riding, uh, my bike on Nine Mile Road. Uh, it's dangerous, so I use the sidewalk on the north side of the street.
Anyone else?
I, I have one more thing. Um, I think one of my concerns was the narrow streets where we had no sidewalks and the daytime parking of both sides, we didn't go to the front or the side. I mean, that's definitely sound like a potential fight show in the streets. But I, I have something with Mr. Fraser, you, you were asking the very question of who's coming and everything that I want to come, and that is people who are riding bikes and who are, and two things. I mean, as a young person, I had a bike and, you know, you learn how to ride a bike and where to ride a bike. And I was always told, and I still believe that, you don't ride on the sidewalk, kids, little children can, but you ride in the same direction of traffic and you don't ride across a busy street, you walk the bike across. What I see today are people riding, riding across in heavy traffic and when they, they couldn't stop if a car came around, they don't walk their bike. This is all part of the education process, which I think is extremely important. And the other thing is when I see young adults, mostly young adults, driving, riding their bikes on the sidewalk, and I live in an area where a lot of people walk, and I have walked all the way from Royal Oak, downtown Royal Oak to, uh, Greenfield, um, and, uh, Ten Mile or Lincoln, which is out seven, eight miles, and I have seen so many people on the sidewalk, just going fast. You don't have the right of way, pedestrians don't have the right of way. This happens in Southfield, it happens all over the areas, I've seen it in a couple of times. Uh, Royal Oak, Berkeley, Beverly Hills, we really need an education program, a safety, a safety program before we, it's got to be part of it, but, you know, I would like to see it start sooner because every time I see these kids riding across Greenfield Road, riding, it's, it's just, it's an accident waiting to happen. Um, but I, I like the concept, I really like the concept. I do recognize it's gonna take a long time to implement because, when you talk about repaving roads, that's a very expensive process that we're lucky, you know, we have to get other money to do this, so it's not, it's not, because we're in a new city, we're just building a city, we just do all of this in one hub. But I do like the concept and I think it takes a very long time, it's a long, long thing, but I, I like, I really, I know where, um, Civic Center drive over by Hope Church, they have, we get put to a path, we have a walking path and it's a sidewalk, there's people, and it's a, it's a great idea, I mean, works when you have the space, it's a wonderful place. So that's my comment, I'm, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
I, I just noticed Mr. Campbell is here and he was supposed to speak.
Yes, but I, I, I don't want to change the, we'll, we'll talk to him later. I'm not, I, I'm not gonna change the, we'll talk to him later. Uh, the next one?
Through the chair, just one final comment. Thank you very much. And again, we'll, we'll, uh, be bringing back, um, some additional, um, updates, but in the interim, should you desire to keep track of, of our progress, we do have a link, um, through Norm's site that posts all of the workshops, all the maps and preliminary development that I'd like to hand out to the council.
Is it where the Southfield looking at?
Yes.
On your, on your website.
Right, and here's the link and then, uh, this gives real-time updates to the work that we're doing so that short of us coming back in January or February, if you, obviously you can call our department, but I'd like to pass this on.
No, that's good, I like that.
Thank you.
work, um, and I wanted to point that, but actually-
I just wanna, uh, the, the managing partner has been, uh, on another assignment and, uh, not available to, I mean, I would be satisfied, uh, in terms of the review, so I'd like to have a little bit more time to bring it back, uh, uh, on the, uh, block. A little bit more time to, to review this for the auditors. There's been a lot of changes in the county rules, and we're asking for, don't have a common standard course, uh, uh, fifty-four, old pronouncement, and I want to make sure that we're in full compliance while the requirements fit up.
I, I'm gonna substitute on the item, I think she's always got this in the packet, from the Field Zone, um, and I've been asking the neighbors if she would like to, uh, step up, if my opponent wants to, um, we're gonna talk about this, okay? So we can step up to my table. Um, our reason, uh, Field Zone is requesting a waiver of a lease agreement, agreement currently stays, please shall not move or sell or move the tenant for dispensing of alcoholic beverages on the side of the facility. They go on to say they would like to hold a one-night fundraiser to serve wine only that would be available to the adults dependent on fundraisers. Fundraisers start Sunday five o'clock until eight thirty-five PM and early thirty PM on Saturday, December seventeenth of this year. Um, this is, that's the Field Zone, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
At, in that, in that, in that spot. So we have to, I guess, decide if we want to, um, give them, so, there's going to be a point for this, but how do we, how do we proceed to make an amendment or allow this? I want to see what's the-
Well, it's relatively simple.
Sounds very nice, correct?
Yes, on a one-time only basis, for this particular event, we would waive that prohibition. We would do that by motion and administration, but that would be a time of the essence. We would, uh, you know, it would-
I'd move a rule ten.
Smart.
Uh, do we have to take a rule, a rule conference now that?
Yes.
No, just, we do?
Rule ten.
You have to take a rule call.
All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Can you pause?
And I'll move a, uh, one-time, uh, specific, um, waiver of the, um, policy to allow, um, uh, wine to be served at the Field Zone fundraiser.
On December seventeenth.
On December seventeenth, thank you.
Uh, most of my, Mr. Schreiber, supported by Mr. Fraser, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, that's-
Question. Uh, Mr. Veris, does that have any kind of effect?
I didn't hear a question.
Which was this, the waiver, it's not saying any kind of effect, if that's what-
I don't think so. I mean, you're here for an hour and you can say that. Uh, was it on the word?
No, I understand that, but, you know, the, the facility, that's not using the pavilion, it's not using that use facility itself, that's what I was considering.
I did, uh, through the chair, uh, deploy in terms of the, uh, relationship. Uh, we are able to, uh, utilize the system, with the licenses that the city has, as long as we take the appropriate precautions and procedures and be under the control of the actual dispensing, and we'll do whatever, you know, whatever we're supposed to do in that regard. But I have talked to Congressman Ron, uh, who, who, uh, you know, misses her interests and he's good with it.
So they will be using our, that is, the, because our-
Yes, that avoids the, that's, an extra cost.
Time and cost, right. Any other questions, if I can, or costs?
I assume that this is an adult, uh, kind.
Yes, it is.
Um, it's a, 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 it's a-
While, while we have a captive audience, would you like to share more about the fundraisers coming up?
Why, thank you. Yes, I would. Uh, we are having a jazz acoustic concert at the Field Zone, which is right underneath the, um, police department, right here in the municipal complex. It is for adults.
The old library, the old library, a lot of people-
Oh, okay, at the old library in the basement. Um, like we said, it's for adults only. The prices start at thirty dollars a ticket, fifty dollars for a couple, dinner is included, and our entertainment includes, um, the Southfield Jazz Ensemble, which I'm sure some of you have heard, it's about twenty pieces. Um, it is the John Arnold Trio, which, uh, got an award for the second year of being the best new jazz, um, trio in Detroit, in Metro Detroit. And we also have the KDJ Trio, which is, um, a group of, um, young people, sixth to eighth grade, who will be our entertainer, entertainers, coming in for one set and leaving. So they will not be there for, um, to, uh, mingle with the adults, they will come and go. Um, and we also have first rate. All of these performers are nationally known and have their own recordings. So we hope that you can come and turn with us. Tickets are available by calling two four eight, three nine five, nine six six three.
And the, the date is a Saturday.
It is a Saturday, from five to eight thirty.
Now, if you, we, we have our next meeting on December twelfth, you could come and make a note with us so that more people could, uh, know about it, if you'd like to come around.
I would like to do that. Thank you very much. Thank you for your support.
Leonard, the phone number again?
Is two four eight, three nine five, nine six six three.
How much is the ticket?
The tickets start at thirty and it's fifty dollars for a couple, so you get a price rate.
And anything about that that you'd like to go on?
Absolutely.
Thank you, listening.
Thank you.
Why don't you make the announcement, send out the emails to all the councils and buy advertisements in your-
Yes, we did send out the announcement to, uh, city council and we've got, um, a few returns, so thank you very much, Mr. Moss and Mr. Fraser, and we look forward to receiving others. So, um, we have ad contracts for our book for, um, say, from twenty dollars to sixty dollars. So it's not that expensive, we hope it will, and our deadline is December tenth.
Where'd you see that? I never did. Yeah. I didn't see it.
Did it? Um, I just saw the, we'll send out reminders, but we did send one to everybody, to personal, last day, city of Southfield.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's good to me.
Okay, we'll send it again, sorry about that.
Doesn't, Nancy can help you out with that.
Okay.
Sometime I get for Cassie's mail, I don't give it to them.
(laughing).
Thank you.
You keep the money, huh?
Send you an email, yes, I, I, I-